The Candidates, a League of Women Voters ABC Forum for candidates running for Ramsey City Council, Ward 1. We thank the Candidates, Ramsey Municipal Center, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, the League of Women Voters is holding our Meet the Candidates forum without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. My name is Gretchen Sable. I'm a member of the Anoka-Blaine-Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters, and I'm a resident of neighboring Andover. I don't have a vote for Ramsey City Council. The League sponsors this forum so voters in Ramsey Ward 1 can get to know the Candidates. Questions for this forum were drawn from a pool of questions submitted by the public for Ramsey City Council in the 2020 general election. Both of the Candidates running for this seat in Ward 1 were invited. Unfortunately, Ryan Heineman was not able to attend today. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or Candidates for this office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates on important issues, and that's what this forum is about: informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our webpage at lvvabcmn.org. It's important to put @mn because there's other LWVABCs. So, lvvabcmn.org. Women, men, and young people are invited to join. Our work includes voter education like this, events like this, as well as voter registration, and working on issues in our community and state and nationwide. When you visit our website, you can learn a lot about League of Women Voters and the work that we do. So with us today then is Jane Kovart, and she will be our sole candidate here for this forum. We're going to ask Jane to answer three introductory questions which she received in advance, followed by 10 questions submitted by the public for the previous forums, and then she'll end with a closing statement. Answers for each question is limited to one minute, and we have a timer present who will let the Candidate, Ms. Kovart, know when the minute is up. The Can-- well, our Candidates for this forum is Jane Kovart. Ryan Heineman is also running, and we're sorry that he wasn't able to attend. So let's get started with our introductory questions. The first one, Ms. Kovart, describe your background and community involvement.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Gretchen, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting me to this forum today and giving me the opportunity to talk to the community. I've lived in Anoka for 34 years, and I've lived in the city of Ramsey for 15 of those years. I own a small business, and I know what it-- how to run a successful business, and I've been in there in the business for 30 years. A successful business runs with plans, strategic plans in place, visions of where you want to go, of the future, written down, budgeting, and I know how those traits will carry over into the City Council. I've been working on the Environmental Policy Board for the city of Ramsey for five years. It's there that I've learned that the city of Ramsey works in a very similar way to the businesses that I've helped run, and I know that they're a successful city as well. They say it's not-- it doesn't take rocket science, but for me, it sometimes does. I'm in-- I've got a degree in aerospace engineering from the University of Minnesota, and I've-- it was there that I learned to become data-driven and to research, research, research. Those traits I will take into-- to help my customer. I consider them my customer, the residents of Ward 1, city of Ramsey, and I will work hard for them.
Thank you. Can you tell us why you're seeking this office?
My dad used to tell me, "Kid, you can't complain if you don't get involved." I want to get involved. I want to give back to the community. And when I was-- when I've been working on the Environmental Policy Board, I've been-- I've developed a passion for the environment and the natural resources of this beautiful city. If elected, I will work hard. For example, I take Highway-- Avenue 167th Avenue back and forth to work every day. It is badly in need of road repair. Now that the funding has been acquired for the road construction, I plan on taking that to the City Council and hope to move that schedule-- that up in the schedule from the original 2024 date to a lot sooner than that. It really needs the work. I am excited to work for the city of Ramsey, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. Can you tell us what your goals are for the city of Ramsey's future?
My goals are what I hear from the residents. Their biggest concerns are safety, public safety, and road maintenance, infrastructure, stable taxes is an important one, bringing new businesses into the area, and also offering recreational opportunities for their children and for their families. I believe Ramsey has a good balance of those already, but I think that we can continue to grow as we get more residents into the area. With these goals in mind that the residents currently have, I plan to bring those issues to the City Council and grow them, or bring them in and help to meet their-- meet those goals from our residents with the plans that they've already had in place for growth and maintenance. I think we have to plan for both growth and maintenance. A successful business works that way, and that's how a business-- and that's how the city of Ramsey will need to work as well.
Thank you. Our next question is one that came from some sponsors that we had for our previous forum, and it's about businesses. You've talked a lot about business. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
So, I own my own business. It's a diversity-owned, women-owned business, and that minority-owned and women-owned businesses is very near and dear to my heart. We have a-- my business is headquartered in Monticello, Minnesota. We have locations throughout the Midwest, and I have 17 team members, and I consider them team members. We have one of the greatest teams that has ever been, as far as I'm concerned, in the service industry, and we serve the natural gas industry. So I believe-- can I-- can you repeat the question for me? I want to tie that in.
Specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community?
So, part of my certification for a woman-owned business, I also can get certified with the Small Business Administration. We have several states that we work in, the city of Illinois, the state of Illinois, as well as the city of Minne-- the state of Minnesota. And I am registered with the small businesses. I also encourage, particularly in times of COVID, my team members to work with and support restaurants and smaller businesses even than we have. I think it's important that our residents have that availability to them after times of COVID, and it's important, and I do endorse that with my employees as well.
Thank you very much. Another business question. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in this community?
Businesses look for infrastructure. They look for good roads. They look for an employee base. We need to grow our residents in the city of Ramsey to be able to bring in more retail businesses, a couple of larger retail businesses. But I also think it's important to provide smaller retail businesses, restaurants, coffee shops for the new employees that our residents, our new businesses will want to bring in. I believe that the city of-- or that the train into the city and out of the city also provides that labor base as well. I believe that supporting that with the city, bringing in new businesses. The city of Ramsey has an EDA. I know that I've worked with an environmental-- or with the Economic Development Authority at this-- in the city of Monticello. They can provide low-cost loans to new businesses coming in, and I would like to look for that as well. I plan on spending more time learning what it is that our current EDA does here in the city of Ramsey, and looking to see what opportunities we can provide for small businesses.
Thank you very much. Kind of a long question here. As a council member, you're going to have issues that divide the community, such as the recent divide over the impact of mask mandates on area businesses. What have you learned about decision-making when faced with two very different competing forces over an issue?
Divisiveness in this day and age is-- is-- it's a-- it's a strong emotion. I believe that emotions need to be listened to. People need to be able to express themselves. I work hard to bring my point of view, as well as the facts, into a conversation. I don't believe a conversation is ever really ended until some kind of resolution is brought to mind. I think it's important to keep open lines of communication between all areas of our Ramsey residents. That's one of the goals I plan on bringing in. I'm working already on getting a communication network pulled together for my Ward 1 residents, for them to be able to give me feedback more easily. But I also plan on meeting one-on-one, if need be, to those that feel that they really strongly need to speak to me, and then I can hopefully bring some resolution for them to the City Council.
Thank you very much. A specific question to Ward 1 now. Ward 1 can be fairly described as mostly urban Ramsey. What do you see as the proper urban-rural balance in Ramsey? And what aspect of development of the community do you foresee being the community's biggest challenge?
So I believe Ward 1 is mostly rural. There are larger plots, larger residences, lots, that's what I'm trying to say. So, the northern side of Ramsey tends to be more rural. The southern side tends to be more urban, and I believe that's a good balance. And I've wa-- I've looked at the plan that the city of Ramsey has in place for implementing retail in the core, as well as how do we bring those people in the more northern area, the Ward 1 area, down to the-- to the businesses in the area. We need to make sure that the infrastructure is in place for them. We need to make sure that there's parking available. And again, the more residents there in the area, the more of those kinds of businesses that we can bring in. People who've been here a long time in the northern suburb-- in the northern part of the suburb like the size lots that they have. And so, I'm not planning on changing that at all, but I do believe that there is some areas where we can-- we can work with the planning commission and develop those lots.
Thank you. The next two questions are related to one another. Last summer, Ramsey passed a five-year franchise fee that took effect in October as a stable funding source for road repair and management. Some have called for this to be rescinded. As a council member, will you support the franchise fee, and would you explain why or why not?
I've learned a lot about the franchise fee since it was implemented earlier this-- or last year. I believe that maintenance of our infrastructure, roads, is so important. The traditional way that we have sort-- or have financed this is through assessments, special assessments to the property owners, in the theory that it increases the value of their lots. In this case, it-- there would be a 15% increase in property taxes, plus a special assessment to those property owners. I don't believe that this is the best way to fund our infrastructure. It's a shock and awe kind of thing, where we shock the residents with this fee, and it's over the next 30 years that they have to pay for it, so the interest as well. The franchise fee is an option. I know they researched it for five years before they came up with this option. Bonding is another one. Bonding would have been more expensive to our city. The franchise fee levels out the availability that all of our residents pay for the roads that they use, even if they aren't living on them. So I believe in the franchise fee, and I support it.
Thanks. Do you think that the final decision on this type of funding choice should be made by the voters or by the council after public input and discussion?
You know, I've been on several boards in the community. I've been a president at a golf league, and I've been on the state board, as well as the treasurer. The members elect those people to make choices for them. It's up to those members to then provide that feedback to those people that they brought to the table. If they don't like that person, then, you know, vote them out and get somebody else in there. I believe that's the way government works. But I think it's really important to mostly get that feedback, that input into that person. Let them know what-- where you stand. I don't believe that this should have been taken to a vote to the people. I believe that there was a lot of research. It's a complex situation, and I believe that the City Council knew exactly the best sort of resources to use.
Thank you. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Ramsey, and how would you, as an elected official, help to solve this issue?
Again, COVID has really struck hard on our youth. There is a lot of outdoor recreational activities for our youth, sliding hills in the winter, skate parks in the summer. We have a lot of outdoor fields, our youth after jungle gyms and that kind of thing. I believe that they could probably bring in more for the middle-- middle-aged or middle-school age and high school youth. I think that's important. I think the Rum River Arts Center has some great programs, and I think we could enhance those as well. More-- one or two more skate parks would be great. I really think that the music in the park that they have in the summer is really a good opportunity, and we can promote that and help bring youth together during that time as well. Outdoor activities are great for kids, and I think that that's really the emphasis that we need to place.
Thanks a lot. Where do you prioritize a new bridge across the Mississippi from Champlin-Dayton into Ramsey, and what impact do you think this would have on Highway 10 traffic and access for Ramsey residents?
So, I travel 101 every day, back and forth to work when I go out to Monticello. That was a wonderful bridge when that came into place. Otherwise, it was 20-- Highway 25 up in Monticello, or it was Champlin Bridge. The Champlin Bridge was closed down for an accident one Saturday when I was driving by, and I had to go an hour out of my way to be able to get to where I needed to get back home. I believe that it's important that we try to get a bridge across the river. The most logical place to me is across the river to Dayton, but I'm-- it's a big task, and I don't know is that we are going to be able to make that happen. Can we afford it? Can we be a driving force? It's going to be multiple communities, the state. It's going to be a complex problem, but I believe that would be the location where a bridge should go across.
Thanks. We're getting close to the end here. What priority do you place on the city's park system, and what one new priority would you have for the next five years for parks?
So here's where my environmental policy background comes into play. There's 27 parks in the city of Ramsey, and we have a wide variety for different age levels. Every time a new planning area comes in, a new development comes in, they plan for green space, they plan for connecting into the parks and the biking system. I believe that we need a wide variety. I would prioritize, again, from the environment, finding a way to bring in more natural gardens, more relaxed walking paths for the elderly population, who is not necessarily looking to play on jungle gyms and a skate park. But I believe that those are all that important as well. But I would probably focus on maintaining the paths that we have, the nice walking paths, bike paths, and bring in the natural grasses. Pollinators is a question I had prepped for, and actually, the Environmental Policy Board had dealt with pollinators at one point in that discussion, and we bring in natural landscapes to-- with flowers that are popular for pollinators. So that's important as well, and I think we can enhance our parks with more of that.
Thank you very much. And now you can give your closing statement, if you like.
Thank you. Thank you again, Gretchen, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. I appreciate it. I am running for City Council of Ramsey, Ward 1. I will listen to your voice. I will take that voice back to the council meeting room and provide the-- to be-- help us to provide the best decisions for my Ramsey neighbors in Ward 1. I will use facts. I will use res-- I will be research-driven. I will listen to data, or listen to the-- my resident-- the residents in my ward, as well as following the data. I promise to be transparent. I will work hard, even more, to make Ramsey an even more excellent place to be. I ask for your support to do the-- to be able to do this. I ask that you vote for Jane Kovart for Ward 1 City Council for the city of Ramsey on February 9th, or sooner, because early voting is already available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this wraps up our Meet the Candidates forum for Ramsey City Council, Ward 1. Like Ms. Kovart said, Election Day is February 9th, but you can vote now. Ramsey residents can vote in-person, absentee, here at the Ramsey Municipal Center, or at the Anoka County Government Center. Voting can be done between 8:00 and 4:30 Monday through Friday. Also, Saturday, February 6th, City Hall will be open from 10:00 to 3:00 for voting, and a little bit later on February 8th until 5:00 o'clock. So there's lots of ways you can vote in-person. You can also vote absentee by U.S. mail by contacting Anoka County Elections for an application, or the phone number for Anoka County Elections is 763-324-1300, or you can request an application online from the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. For more information on absentee voting, you can contact the city of Ramsey or look on the city's website. It's important, if you do plan to vote by mail, that you do that relatively quickly so that we don't run into issues with postal, because they can only count votes that are backed by Election Day. So make sure you do it soon if you're going to vote by mail. And of course, you can vote in-person. I mean, we can always do the old standard and actually show up on Voting Day. So there's two precincts for Ward 1. To find the address of your Ward 1 polling place, you can visit the Minnesota Secretary of State's website, or again, look at the city website for information. Thank you to the Candidates for running for office and for taking time to participate in this forum. Thanks to the city of Ramsey for use of the council chambers, and thanks to our friends at QCTV for recording this event and cablecasting it to the voters of Ward 1. Goodbye.
Glad this worked for you too, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks for-- thanks again for accommodating.
Okay, we ready?
Hello, and welcome to Meet the Candidates, a League of Women Voters ABC Forum for candidates running for Ramsey City Council, Ward 1. Thank you to the Candidates, Ramsey Municipal Center, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, the League of Women Voters is holding our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. I'm Gretchen Sable, member of Anoka-Blaine-Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters and a resident of neighboring Andover. I don't have a vote in this race for Ramsey City Council. The League sponsors this forum so voters in Ramsey Ward 1 can get to know the Candidates. Questions from this forum were drawn from a pool of questions submitted by the public for Ramsey City Council in the 2020 general election. Both of the Candidates running for this seat were invited to this forum. Yesterday, we had a forum with Jane Kovart because she was able to be here then, and today we have Ryan Heineman with us because he's able to be here today. So we're doing a two-part forum for one race. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or Candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates on important issues, and that's what this forum is about: informing voters. If you're interested in League of Women Voters, visit our webpage at lvvabcmn.org. Again, that's lvvabcmn.org. Women, men, and young people are invited to join. Our work includes voter education, events like this, as well as voter registration, and working on many different issues. When you visit our website, you can learn a lot about LWV and the work we do. The Candidates will answer three introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by 10 questions submitted by the public for previous forums, and then will end with closing statements from the Candidates. Answers for all the questions are limited to one minute. We have a timer present who will let the Candidates know when the minute is up. Candidates-- our Candidates for this forum are Jane Kovart and Ryan Heineman, and we have Ryan with us today. So let's get started with our introductory questions. Mr. Heineman, can you describe your background and community involvement?
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters Forum. I'd like to thank the citizens and the residents of Ramsey for tuning in and for everybody that's helped put this together. A little bit about myself. I grew up in Ramsey, moved here when I was about two years old, went to PAC Charter School. I was involved in all of the sports teams, the Ramsey Youth Athletic Association. I also played soccer for PAC Charter School, which is based in Ramsey, and I-- after graduation, I went into the military. So went into the military, moved around quite a bit, met my wife at PAC Charter School as well. After that, we lived in the north metro for quite a while, moving from Fridley to Brooklyn Center to Blaine and then back to Ramsey. I am involved in the EDA, the Ramsey Economic Development Authority for-- or Commission, and I'm also volunteer at church and volunteer for Ramsey Soccer. Thank you.
Thank you. Why are you seeking this office, Mr. Heineman?
Thanks. I'm seeking this office because I've noticed quite a bit that what we understand is the federal government and what happens there, but what a lot of us don't understand is that the decisions made on the local government oftentimes affect us more. When you're talking about taxes or restrictions, regulations, things of that nature, that comes from the local government. Moving back to Ramsey, I felt it very important to get involved. I did. I met a lot of residents who had a lot of things to say, and I felt like a lot of them were not being represented well. My predecessor did a great job, but I think there's some more work to be done. I'm excited to do it and excited to represent the residents of Ward 1.
Thank you. If elected, what would you do to provide-- oh, no, I'm sorry. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business. No, I'm on the wrong question. Holy moly, giving you--
No problem.
Giving you advantage here. What are the goals for the city of Ramsey's future? What are your goals for the city of Ramsey's future?
So, I understand that the city of Ramsey, our org chart, if you look at the city of Ramsey, we have residents with city council and staff, and I want to reprioritize to the original intent, which is residents, city council, and staff. I-- my motto for my race is "Trust Ramsey." I believe that Ramsey residents have lived here for quite some time. My father and mother moved here when they were-- in 1991, and I've met a lot of residents that have lived here for 20, 30 years. And I feel like as the city evolves, we need to evolve with it, but at the same time, we need to protect some of the rural charm and some of the things that made Ramsey great to begin with. So, I want to protect those who have been around Ramsey that have some very great ideas, and I want to balance the innovating-- or innovating of the core with maintaining what made Ramsey great to begin with.
Thank you. I'm sorry for giving you a foreshadowing of these questions.
No problem.
Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on the behalf of the small business community.
That's a great question. My current job is I'm the Director of Sales for a tech company that sells technology to schools. I was employee number-- number two at this company, and I started back in 2018. Since then, we've grown from two employees to currently 30 employees, I believe, is our most recent count. Been involved in every part to include financing, hiring, payroll, acquiring loans from the bank, working with distribution, contacts overseas. So, I've had a lot of experience with business and understanding how businesses operate, and advocacy, I've also helped quite a bit with social media, getting certain certifications that help us. And one of the things that makes us unique is we're the first public benefit corporation in America, so we are-- earn technology. So we're a for-profit company with a nonprofit mission.
Thank you. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in this community?
That's great. That's great. I think we need to understand what the businesses are needing. I think one of the things businesses need in our city is they need consistency. So, a hot topic that's been going around Ramsey quite a bit is the franchise fee, and I know that a lot of businesses that were involved or made aware of the franchise fee at the time didn't have a clear understanding of how that would affect their business. That franchise fee, these numbers are-- please fact-check them. They can be a little off. I don't have them in front of me, but up to $800 for gas and $600 for utilities or for electric when you're talking about a business. It could be flip-flop, so go ahead and double-check that. But that's per meter. So I know businesses in Ramsey with eight meters that just got in a very large tax increase. So I think first thing you need to do is have reliability when it comes to the standards for Ramsey and their businesses, and then you can work outward from there.
Thank you. As a council member, you're going to have issues that divide the community, such as the recent divide over the impact of max mask mandates on area businesses. What have you learned about decision-making when faced with two very different competing forces over an issue?
I think when it comes to making hard decisions, you have to look at the presupposition of the argument. So, if you're looking at any decision, you have to look at where are their commonalities and where does the decision begin. So, when you're talking about issues of public health, or you're talking about issues regard to personal rights and responsibilities, you need to take a very close look at how that affects the individual. We live in a representative republic. That means that the majority doesn't rule. That means that the minority is protected by the Constitution, and I think that you have to balance that view with public safety. So, if you're not honest with people as far as where they're coming from and why they're coming from, it's going to continue to divide individuals. You need to let people know you understand the rationale, that you respect the rationale, whether it's a medical issue for masks or against masks, and that you're listening and that you understand the basis of their argument, because if they feel misunderstood, it's not going to work. So we need to bring people together around that.
Thank you. Ward 1 can be described as mostly urban Ramsey. What do you see as a proper urban-rural balance in Ramsey, and what aspect of development of the community do you foresee being the community's biggest challenge?
So Ward 1 is actually a little less urban. It's the northeast portion of Ramsey, and there is some urban sprawl there. We have a lot of townhomes that make up a great part of Ward 1, and-- but the lot of Ward 1 is actually more rural, and I think when you're incorporating kind of an urban sprawl into the ward, that is okay if you do so responsibly. We need to make sure that lot sizes remain large enough that we don't feel like we're crammed in, and we need to not use the same approach in the core, which is more urban, to Ward 1, which is more rural. For example, you can't snowmobile if you live below 167th. There's a restriction on that, I believe. And there's plenty of parts south of 167th that are much closer to north in characteristics of the geography, 167th, than of the core. So I think we can't have a one-size-fits-all approach when it comes to lines of delineations like roads. We need to make sure that everybody's represented well.
Thank you. The next two questions are related to one another. Last summer, Ramsey passed a five-year franchise fee that took effect in October as a stable funding source for road repair and management. Some have called for this to be rescinded. As a council member, will you support the franchise fee funding mechanism? And please explain why or why not.
I will not. I believe that the franchise fee was rushed through as a Band-Aid for a problem that needs a tourniquet. I think that if you look at the roads of Ramsey, we have neglected them for far too long. I know the city council has understood that. They've been very clear, and they've done a good job of understanding the issue, but I disagree with them on the fix. I think if you look at the franchise fee, from what I've read and from what I understand, it's going to generate $2 million a year. I also understand that you can redo one mile of road for $1 million. So we have a city with 170 miles of road, and we're throwing $2 million at it. That's not going to be enough to redo all the roads in 50 years, and they'll be decaying by then. So I think we need to have a real approach to the problem. We don't need to pass a franchise fee as a Band-Aid. We need to take a hard look and reprioritize spending to address it.
Thank you. Should the final decision on this type of funding choice be made by the voters or by the council after public input and discussion is received?
I think we need to be consistent. My personal approach would be to reprioritize spending so that we're spending less in certain areas, and then shifting that spending over to our roads, so that way we don't have to increase taxes to accomplish that. I think if we are talking about a tax increase, I know former members of the city council had mentioned that they would not increase taxes of that nature without going to Ramsey for a vote, and then that was never carried through. Ramsey residents weren't given a choice. And being here in person, I saw plenty of Ramsey residents that felt misrepresented. I think we need to look at how we've addressed the road problem, how we've increased levies or increased spending, and we need to bring that to the Ramsey residents. Ramsey residents are smart. They know where their money is going. They know if it's worth it. And I think we need to give them a chance to have input on how we spend our money.
Thank you. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for the youth of Ramsey? And how would you, as an elected official, help to solve this issue?
I think Ramsey youth, across the board, need to understand that they have value, that they are smart, that they are the future, and they need to be told encouraging things. They need to be told the history of youth movements, the history of their own, of their own story. We far too often talk about youth as far as they don't work hard, they don't try hard, they don't, you know, they're on technology all the time. But what we don't do a lot of is encouraging them and telling them, "This is your path, and we're excited to watch you do that." So having a consorted effort to explain to youth their role in society, to help them achieve that, and to give them a positive outcome to look forward to, I think is a lot more important than focusing on stuff that divides us.
Where do you prioritize a new bridge across the Mississippi River from the Champlin-Dayton line into Ramsey? And what impact do you think this would have on Highway 10 traffic and access for Ramsey residents?
So I think a great spot for that is a spot that's already been considered, and I believe is already been decided upon or very close to, and that would be the overpass over Armstrong going into the Dayton area. That's been a bridge that they've talked about for a very long time, and I think when you look at Ramsey, it's sort of a gateway to the north where we are capturing a lot of traffic going up Highway 10. But if you look at Hennepin County, they resort to Interstate 94 because they can't get across the river. And I think if you bring that bridge across Armstrong, you're going to save a lot of road space, actually, between the Rum River to that bridge, because a lot of people will use the Dayton roads, which will actually be better for our roads. And the entry point onto Armstrong is kind of the end of, not the end of Ramsey, but it's definitely the last stop into Ramsey, so I don't think it'll affect traffic. I think it'll actually improve traffic.
Thank you. What priority do you place on the city's park system? And what is one new priority that you would have for its next five years?
Parks are very important, especially when you're looking at bringing in new residents, especially young families. So parks are very important. I think we should make sure we're spending money wisely and that we're doing everything in our efforts to do so. You can look at things like watering less, using grass regulators to cut down on mowing. I think it's important. One thing that I found out recently, talking with members of the Ramsey sports program, is that Elmcrest Park is our biggest park. They can't start soccer until the middle of May, when other cities start in April, because we don't have drain tile in Elmcrest Park. That decreases the quality of living in Ramsey, and it pushes people to other sports programs like Elk River, Coon Rapids, Andover, Blaine. I think we need to prioritize our parks to actually serve the people that they're meant to serve, which is everybody, but we really need to double down on youth sports and making sure that Ramsey becomes a magnet for families coming into Ramsey spending money.
Thank you. So now it's time for closing statements.
Great. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, especially the League of Women Voters Forum. This is a great opportunity to present myself to the city. We have an important decision coming up on February 9th. You can obviously vote before that. But I think what we're going to encounter here is we need transparency in this position. I have been very open and honest in where I find myself and what positions I have. Nobody has to vote for me if they don't like me. People who like me can vote for me. I'm trying to be as consistent as possible, so that way you know who you're getting when I become the next city council member for Ward One. And I just want to reiterate that please do your due diligence. Look at my website, look at my opponent's website, see where we stand, ask the hard questions, and I think you'll get the best city council member by doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This wraps up our Meet the Candidates forum for Ramsey City Council, Ward One. Election Day for this special election is February 9th. You can vote right now during the week. Ramsey residents may vote in-person absentee at the Ramsey Municipal Center or the Anoka County Government Center. You can vote between 8:00 and 4:30, Monday through Friday. City Hall will also be open for absentee voting on Saturday, February 6th, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m., and until 5:00 o'clock on Monday, February 8th. So there's lots of chances for in-person voting in a very secluded and socially distanced setting here at City Hall. You may also vote absentee by U.S. mail by contacting Anoka County Elections for an application. Their phone number is 763-324-1300, or by requesting an application online from the Minnesota Secretary of State. For more information on absentee voting, you can also contact the city if you have questions. And of course, you can vote in-person on February 9th. There's two precincts in Ward One, and they will both be open. You can find the address of your polling place on the Secretary of State's website or by contacting the city, looking at city website. Thank you to our candidates for running for office and for taking time to participate in this forum. Thank you to the city of Ramsey for the use of council chambers for this forum, and thanks to our friends at QCTV for recording this event and cablecasting it for the voters of Ward One. Goodbye. Good job.